All right, please stand and join us in the floor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to call our regular school board meeting for independent school district number 544 to order. Our first item of business is to establish our form.
Matt Leventhal, here.
Here.
Billy Cole.
Here.
Lee Anderson, here. Steve Wiegand, here. Melissa Murray.
Present.
We have a form.
All right, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All right, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The agenda is approved. We'd like to make some acknowledgements. First of all, congratulations to Mason Jensen and Cameron Appert, sorry, Cameron Appert, who will be heading to the state in gymnastics. And also, congratulations to the Otter team for receiving the gold academic award for a 3.91 GPA. And to our first-year head coach, Satira Harlow, for being named Section 8A Coach of the Year. And then also, congratulations to the Otter State participants for swimming with Tyler Hanson, Will Pejari, Will Prodey, and Tristan Trosbig. And then divers, Caleb Newbauer and Evan Erlinson. And then also, congratulations to our wrestler going on to state, Dustin Portales. Anything else?
Yes, that's good.
All right. Got some good athletic action going right there. We have reports tonight, beginning with the Chief of Public Safety for first of all. Kyle Bergren came to join us with their meeting and give us an update on school safety, so welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. Superintendent Nass reached out to me and just asked if I would come in tonight and give a brief update on some of the safety and security issues that we deal with and work with the school district on. And if you have any questions at any time, please feel free to interrupt. But we have a really good working relationship with the school district. And really, it is a wide range of issues that we work on as far as safety goes. Anything from traffic safety to security around the school, whether it be physical security, training of the staff, and then also some trends and behaviors affecting adolescents, the students. So we really have had a pretty good relationship, probably over the last, I think, maybe five, six years. We've been coming to the beginning of the year staff training. It's a great opportunity for us to sit and touch base with all teachers and faculty members. Part of, some of the not-so-exciting part about safety is the planning and writing of policies and procedures. But we have put a lot of effort into looking over our policies. So the school has a set of policies pertaining to safety. And then we, as the city, we also have a specific plan regarding school safety. And that could be anything from, you know, if there was a fire at one of the schools to, you know, having to evacuate a school because, you know, maybe of a natural gas leak, to, you know, a situation where we have some type of threatening behavior within a school building. And I think the last policy that the city has is probably getting about six, seven years old. We're just looking at sitting down and going over that policy, rewriting it. A lot of things have changed, you know, within the district as far as, you know, moving up some students. We've also, the school administration and our staff have sat down and kind of rethought some of our initial plans that were in place for contingency planning. So those are all things that we'll revisit. I know that this spring, we're looking at sitting down with the school administration and the principals and assistant principals and maybe doing a tabletop session on some issues regarding, I think, right now, everyone's concern is with active shooters, especially after the incident that just occurred down in Florida. And we always reach out to the school district if there's anything that we can do from a department standpoint to give better training to staff. We've had Minnesota Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management onsite doing a walk-through of the buildings as far as doing a security assessment. So I think all in all, the school district has been pretty proactive in security planning and preparing. And, you know, we just kind of look to continue that as we go. So, I mean, that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
I'll ask, you know, we talked, we have you come in and train us, like you had mentioned. And there's many different types of training. There's ALICE training, but now, okay, what does A stand for? What does L stand for? Why don't you?
Sure.
Kyle has Run, Hide, Fight.
Yeah.
We understand that one. Can you explain that a little bit for us?
Sure, you bet. You know, I think, you know, to back up a little bit further, after Columbine, a lot of schools, their policy was to go to lockdown. And that was basically just lock yourself in a room and wait it out. And that's really a very ineffective way of dealing with an active shooter situation in the school system. And the school district has changed their policy. We really were pushing Run, Hide, Fight. As Jerry mentioned, there is another program out there called ALICE. It's Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, Evacuate. The principles are almost identical. And as Jerry mentioned, we just like Run, Hide, Fight because of the simplicity of it all. And, you know, no one's going to have to sit and think of what everything stands for. But the other thing we did is, it's kind of funny, I guess not so funny. Some of the teachers kind of give me a hard time about being the dark cloud when we have some of these training sessions. It's usually upbeat at the beginning of the year. But we do bring in case studies from other schools, other incidents. And we really just kind of want to drive home, these are the things that are going to help you survive, and these are the things that aren't successful. And sometimes, it's very unfortunate that you got to kind of go to that level. But I think most of them really take it to heart. And I think they do have a lot of great takeaways from those sessions. But, you know, that's the biggest thing that we're talking, not just in schools, but in churches and businesses, is the whole philosophy of Run, Hide, Fight.
And as part of the Run, Hide, Fight, we also run a number of drills. So we have five fire drills a year per building. So each, each building has the five fire drills. They have one tornado drill, which we're coming up here at the end of April. Then we also have five code, we call them code red and code yellow drills. And a code yellow is where there's an intruder, you know, you might be, have a bank robbery, and there's a robber out in the community. We lock the exterior of our building, and our students continue working in the classroom. So that's a code yellow where the intruder is outside of our building. And then a code red is where the Run, Hide, Fight comes into play, where if you know for sure the intruder's on the other side of the building, you run. But if you know that intruder, active shooter, is very close to you, you hide. And even, I won't say where, but Chief Bergren has told the staff where to hide in that classroom. And then if they do enter, you fight. And because that is your best chance of survival, you know, it's ever. And like you say, it's kind of eerie when you talk about it. But I think our, you know, our staff, they have baseball bats and golf clubs and different things that are, that they can have at their disposal to fight. And so that's, that's probably the biggest thing that we do, is we do the drills. And hopefully, they're confident in what they're going to do. You know, we've talked a lot, we've had a lot of email exchanges about devices for locking doors. Our fire marshal is saying those are not legal devices, but the, a good lock that locks from the inside. And then our exteriors. And can you talk a little bit about, I remember you talking about waves or barriers so you guys can get there sooner.
Yeah. Well, and there's a couple of things too. When we talk about hide too, we're talking about taking active steps to barricade the door, not just, you know, locking a door, turning the light off, and, you know, hiding under a desk. You know, the research shows that if you take active measures and, you know, piling tables up in front of doors and, you know, doing everything that you can to barricade that door, the survival rate increases dramatically. You know, the other thing that we've worked with the school district on is, you know, just access. And I won't get into a lot of details. I think some things that we have discussed with the district and the district has implemented are, you know, they're sensitive because of their nature. And I don't know if publicly discussing them is probably in the best interest. But, you know, we, we train our officers. They come in here every summer. They go into every single school building. They train within the buildings. They become familiar with the buildings. And access for them is not an issue for all those buildings. So we're not just focusing on one building, Kennedy. We go out to all of the elementary schools. And like I said, during the summertime, they're in there, they're becoming familiar with the building. And we're running drills of our own so that everyone is prepared and has pretty good knowledge.
I'll keep, my report's with his right now, so. But the other component of this is we can have barriers to get in and everything. But I think mental health of our staff and knowing our students well. Our principals at admin meeting, we talked a lot about that. And you certainly deal with a lot of mental health issues in your role. And so it's, it's as much as a kid is eating, a student is eating alone, let's not let them do that. Let's make sure that students aren't isolated. They have people to talk to. They have trusting adults. So if something does happen, they are, they are very open to talking to an adult. And we have a, an anonymous bullying report, which is also, students have used for reporting questionable things. So, so the idea is, we want to make sure that we know our students well, and they trust an adult so they can say something that we should know about, and then we can call you.
And that brings up another good point too. We, you know, we do meet with the staff, and we have talked with them about the behavioral aspect of these incidents. Things to watch out for, the red flags, warning signs. So anything that we get, we have shared with, with not only the teachers, but the paras, pretty much the entire faculty. So as much information and knowledge that we get on these situations from a behavioral standpoint, we're very, very quick to share with faculty. And then the other part of that is we do have such a good working relationship with the district. Obviously, we have the School Resource Officer within the building. But there's also a lot of other collateral resources where we have our investigators or human services, some of our different mental health providers. So that if there is something that is troubling, the information is getting shared amongst everybody. And I will say that, you know, in this day and age, we take every single threat very seriously, and we have for some time. It's unfortunate, some of the stuff that's playing out in the media down in Florida with just how much information was out there on this particular individual. But anytime we get a report, whether it's from a citizen, from the school district, from a counseling organization, I mean, we follow up on it immediately, and we're sharing that information. And I think that's probably the biggest key, is to share the information. And the other point too, in talking with the faculty about those behavioral red flags, is that if they have a question like, eh, is this something that I should be concerned about, or isn't it? We always say, just bring it forward. You know, you're better off just, you know, bringing it to someone's attention. If it's nothing, it's not a big deal. But, you know, it's just something that we don't want anybody second guessing themselves. It's just kind of a, if you see something, say something kind of mentality, so.
Any questions for the chief?
Has the staff ever been surveyed as far as how safe they feel, ready, or ready for the worst situation, like shooter or something in school?
Let me throw that back to Jerry. You know, like I said, we, when we meet with them every year, if there's some, we always say, if there's something more that you want, let us know. Because, like I said, if it's more of a hands-on type training that some of the staff wants, we're willing to do that. If it is more of a scenario-based exercise, you know, obviously, when the students aren't in session at the time, you know, we're willing to do everything, so. But that's something that just, here recently, we've discussed.
For my admin meeting today, we're looking at March 23rd. We have a day off from school. So we're looking at doing a refresher on some things and asking just that type of things. What do you need? Do you feel comfortable, all of those things, so.
Are you involved when they do the code red and code yellow drills? Does someone from the city come and participate?
So the School Resource Officer is very involved when you, when we have the code red and code yellows. And there are other officers. So the School Resource Officer will reach out usually to the officers on duty that day just to coordinate when they're having the drills and that type of thing, so.
And is there a certain time of the school year when those are completed, all those drills?
I think they're done randomly throughout.
They're random, but the fire chief tells us the sooner the better. We don't meet them in May when, you know, I mean, we want to, we really front load them. Because then they, and then especially again at the, after the semester, we want teachers, because they have a new group of kids, there might be a new route to lead that classroom. So it's not necessarily, not only do we do drills, but we want staff talking to their kids. Okay, if there's a fire drill, this is the path we go. So anytime you get a new crop of kids, especially at semesters, when you, and at middle school, it's quarters.
And the elementary school too. So by now, everybody's been through.
Correct. The only one we haven't done this year is the tornado drill, which will be in April.
And we do offer kind of age-appropriate curriculum for the Run, Hide, Fight. You know, because obviously, you know, when you get into the elementary grades, there's a certain age where it might be a little more delicate to talk about some of those issues. But we kind of found a curriculum that is kind of loosely based on Stranger Danger. So it's something that kids that age are kind of familiar with and starting to learn. And so I think some of the elementary teachers have kind of integrated that into the Run, Hide, Fight for the, for the upper grades, so.
Jerry and Kyle, maybe that's both of you guys, I mean, we talked about, you know, shooting or things like that. But do we have, or have we gone with our teachers hostage-type situation?
That would be more in the code red. You know, we'd still be hiding and everything. So, you know, you can throw out all these different scenarios. But basically, over the announcements, you would hear comments from, whether it's Mr. Monkey or myself or Mark Maston. We'd be saying, we have a code red situation. There's an intruder in the building near the gym. Or we have a hostage situation. It's located here. So if you're away from that, you're getting away. So all the Run, Hide, Fight principals fill in into that.
I guess when I'm looking at those farce training for our teachers, if they're involved in an actual hostage situation in a room, have our teachers been told, identified what to do, certain things like that?
If someone enters their room, we're telling them to fight. That's the big one.
Yeah. I would agree with that. That's kind of what I've said to the staff too, is that once your classroom door is breached, it's a total game changer. You have to get in that mindset of you're going to defend that classroom regardless. And it becomes real tricky, I mean, I would still, you know, I go back to nightclub shooting in Orlando that started off as a hostage situation. People would have taken the Run, Hide, Fight mentality. That death toll would have probably been far less. And, you know, I was a crisis negotiator with the police department for, I don't know, probably 12, 15 years. Usually, when you have situations like that, it's very, it's usually domestic-related. It's that you're in there with your spouse, you're in there with your children, close family. But to try to train a teacher on how to negotiate something like that is pretty darn difficult. So I think I would just stick with that philosophy of you get everybody out of that immediate area as you possibly can. Yeah, and that's what we've told staff too, is, you know, early on when we started providing the training on Run, Hide, Fight, the questions would come up. They want, what do you do in this situation? And what do you do in that situation? And it's just too hard. There's too many variables in a lot of, a lot of these incidents. So if you just kind of keep it as simple as possible to those three things, you're probably going to have a successful outcome. But, I mean, even in law enforcement, you know, that's kind of the premise that we work under, is that you can't have necessarily a set, a very rigid set of instructions for each potential scenario. Because they're just, you know, you think, after you think you've seen it all, something new pops up, and you're just like, yeah, I would have never thought of that, so.
For the, when we talk about reporting, you mentioned how the teachers are, if you see something, say something. Are students trained to do that as well? If they hear something that their friends are talking about that could be kind of scary? Are they, do they know to talk about it with the?
They do, and they have in the past. I mean, even, you know, I go back to an incident probably five, six years ago. Students are really good about it. And I think, unfortunately, they're going to get better at it because they're seeing what's happening across the country. So, like I said, it's, you know, just kind of an unfortunate outcome of what's going on in our country. But the kids in the past have been really good about reporting. And I, and I really think it's going to get even better because they know what's, what's going to happen if they don't say anything.
We have class meetings beginning of the year, and then all those types of things are addressed. And the anonymous bullying site and all of those are addressed by our principals. And at the younger age, you know, the classroom teacher is their trusted, confident that they share. If there's anything, if anyone's picking on you, you know, that's probably a more likely scenario. You have to let me know so I can help you.
And I think too, you know, some of the concerns, I'll just say that we've had over the years, each one of them is very, very different. You know, some, and I'm always quick to say, just because you expel a student doesn't solve the problem. And I think that's been clear when you look back through some of these incidents. But there's, there's a group that already meets to kind of deal with student issues. It's a pretty collaborative group. And that's kind of the group that we send some of those concerns to. And they kind of vet things out pretty well. So, a lot of good, because there's a lot of good information sharing that goes on already.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, thank you. I appreciate the time, so.
You're welcome to stay as well.
Yeah, that's okay. I didn't so.
Our next report will be from.
We locked you.
Yeah.
Mr. Kolbeck, our next report is from our elementary principal, Adams McKinley.
All right. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about some fun we had at Adam School last week. We, if you want to call it Reader's Theater or the Adam School Drama Club, whatever you want to call it. But we, the staff at Adam School last week brought a book alive for the students. And we had an assembly in the gymnasium. It was a lot of fun that. The story was titled Meanwhile, Back at the Ranch. And every single staff member at Adam School had a part in the play, so to speak. So there were many in the, in the cast. All of the students were familiar with the book. What else?
It's a car's radio out here.
His is going good. So.
Well, we have hearing checks.
Kim Walbotney, she's a first-grade teacher at Adam School. She really should get the credit for making this thing work because she was the director. And it was her, her idea, and she pulled it off. And it was, it was quite, it was quite, I'll use the word spectacular. It was very good. Mike Ebbel was the narrator. Nancy Riard was in charge of costumes. Jeremy Knick was in charge of special effects. And the main characters were John Damuth and Joella Johnson. We even involved, Peter Bootenhoff over here, he got his high school students involved with some of the backdrops. So envision all of the Adam student body sitting on the floor of the gymnasium and really no adults out there supervising them because all of the adults were in the play. But the play was so well-done that the kids were just very engaged in it. I played the sheriff. My role, or my, my one line was, we better wake up the mayor. And the mayor was played by Marissa Silbernagle. So then all the little kids, we, after the play, we talked a little bit that, you know, a lot of people think the mayor is a man, but, you know, the mayor can be somebody like a Marissa Silbernagle. So before the play though, we got the entire cast up. And we passed the microphone down, and we made sure that all of the students understood, okay, you know, I'm playing, you know, today I will play the role of the sheriff. And we just passed the microphone down. So they really had a good understanding going in about, you know, what was, what was happening. So we just had a complete blast. And there was a lot of excitement amongst the students and the staff last week. So I'd just like to thank all of those, everybody, but especially the people that kind of had some very important parts to make that thing happen. And then something that happened at McKinley recently, we celebrated the 100th day of school. We brought all of the kids into the gymnasium. Mrs. Lil, the fire teacher there, and Zero, the hero, they, they juggled with five tennis balls. And the students actually passed a superpower to Mrs. Lil before the juggling of perseverance. The kids knew what perseverance meant because that was a superpower handed out to them on, I think, the 90th day of school. So they passed that out to Mrs. Lil, and we talked about never giving up. Keep going if something gets difficult and challenging. So if one of the tennis balls hit the floor once in a while, we'd stop. And we talked about, hey, we're not going to give up. We're going to keep after this. So we had an exciting day in the gym on the 100th day. And then also, just thought I would mention to you that we have some changes at Adam School for next year. We're starting to talk about those with the staff. A lot of people kind of moving around. Some people changing classrooms, some people changing grade levels with a couple of retirements. We know that we're probably going to have three new people teaching first grade next year at Adam School. Of those three, two would be new to the building. We have eight second-grade teachers, but next year we need seven. So we think we have found a second-grade teacher to teach first grade next year. And so a lot of, a lot of changes, and we're looking to kind of get those, all of those decisions made here sooner rather than later. And we think if we can do that, that will put a lot of people at ease as we go into the spring, kind of knowing what their situation is for next year. So with that, entertaining questions you might have. Hopefully, my report was a little bit lighter than the first one tonight.
I've been in the elementary, and I learned unequivocally from one of the little kids that everybody knows who Zero Hero is.
That's too bad.
So, there's always next year.
Always next year, yeah.
With a big suit on, I'm Santa's suit on.
Well, I think he's just not quite as agile as he once was. Slowing down a little bit.
Any real questions? Any real questions? All right, thanks for your report. Then we'll have a report from Candy Run, elementary principal at Cleveland.
Good evening. I think the most exciting and best news of the day is that kids at Cleveland got to go sliding during FIA Day. So, they were pretty pumped with the new snowfall and a fully covered hill, and then these temperatures that we've all been waiting for arrived too. So it made up for a great day in FIA Day today. And we are always thankful that our FIA teachers are willing to set up the cones down the course and get the sleds out. And they take the time during FIA class to teach the kids safety, the route, and how to take turns and pass the sled to the next person in line. So hereafter, we're hoping that we can open up the sliding hill during recess as well. It's a great added attraction, and you can't, you know, the last couple of years, we haven't been able to do that, just because we didn't have enough snow. And today, they went down enough times where they got down to the grass in a few spots. So, we're going to have to shift to the west, I believe. So that, that was the highlight of the day at Cleveland today. And I do have just some highlights from the month of February that I'd like to share with you. When the high school kids have their snowball week in the elementaries, we always think, you know, well, you know, can we participate, or what can we do? And thanks to our counselor, Katie Yegi, she headed up Fun Fridays in February. So one Friday, we were all wearing our pajamas, another Friday, we were in hats. We had a maroon and gold day Friday, and then last Friday was Inside Out Day. And the kids got a big kick out of wearing their clothing inside out, and you just heard lots of other details that went along with that. So we shared a lot of giggles that day. This week, Ms. Katie has classroom visits scheduled, and she's incorporating the book, We're All Wonders, by the author R.J. Placio. And provide, and that kind of leads into a whole character lesson on kindness, and discussion on what can we do to step in and be helpful when we see somebody else not being kind to another person. And lots of great ideas are shared. So we're thankful that she has those character education lessons scheduled into classrooms on a regular basis. Back on February 2nd, the four traditional fourth grade classes got to participate in a mini movement workshop. We had two instructors through the Spring Board for the Arts come in during a double FIA section, and all four of those sections joined these instructors in the gym and did a whole bunch of different movements to different, some different music. And in the end, it led to all four sections learning, I'm going to call it a line dance or a kind of a snake dance, where they expressed the different seasons that we experienced in Minnesota. And thereafter, this, that's the dance that was brought to our whole community for the, what was called Winter Wonderland Event, Walking in a Winter Wonderland event that took place on Lake Alice during our snow festival. And so the kids were, you know, learned that during class, and were encouraged to go home and share it with their families and participate on Lake Alice. So, they did do some video clips during that segment of time. And when you get that link shared with us, I will certainly share it out with others, because I think it will be really pretty, pretty fun to see. Kind of linking some generational things to, across the generations. Also in February, the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center welcomed up two new interns that are here working with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service staff. These interns join the staff when they go into the classrooms for the weekly lessons that are provided, and everybody benefits from that. The interns certainly kind of have an educational component that they can take with them when they move on to their other, other opportunities. And our students, it's kind of new people, new faces, and we learn some new things from them as well. With this new blanket of snow today, Mrs. Davis's class went out snowshoeing. So both the morning and afternoon classes got to snowshoe on the prairie end of the day, slide on the Cleveland end of their day, and we think they're going to be really tired and have a good night to rest tonight. So, lots of exercise. Looking ahead, conferences are right around the corner, happening next week on March 5th and 8th. Teachers certainly look forward to these times to connect with parents and invite them into their child's classroom and talk about the progress made thus far, and kind of forecast what, what else is coming up this spring. We do encourage parents to take advantage of the online scheduling feature. That just really makes it efficient for parents to be able to look at what time slots there are and choose one that fits their schedule. And it also just confirms things very cleanly on the school end of, of the scheduling process as well. And so teachers are taking a peek at that, and those families that we don't hear from, we're going to be picking up the phone and contacting them to encourage them to come in and visit about their child's progress. The obstacle course is right around the corner each spring. This is another highlight for all elementary students. Adams will have the obstacle course set up mid-March. Then it will travel to McKinley at the beginning of April, and then to Cleveland at the end of April. And all students get about a week's, week's worth of experience with that obstacle course. So it's a, and that too provides a great workout. So a big thank you to our FIA teachers and custodial staff. It is a group effort to get all the equipment retrieved and set up, and then taken down and moved to the next building. So a big thank you to those folks that are involved with that. And then lastly, you know, as principals, we, we wander around the buildings and check things out and observe things. And one thing that I just am always grateful for and thankful for, and kind of just get goosebumps when I see, all the different ways that we are continually building relationships with kids. And some that just came to my mind as I walked about last week, there are always students sharing information with parent educators or a custodian, or yesterday, or last Friday, I just stood back and listened to one of our servers in the lunch line, just have a wonderful conversation with kids when they were kind of waiting for some more food to come. But we're always building those relationships. Staff are out and about greeting students as they arrive in the mornings. We provide some supervision for kids in the mornings, and those are some really valuable conversations that are taking place with kids. Secretarial staff working with families' needs throughout the school day, the phone conversations we have with, with parents, and the tender care provided those kids in the health offices. Sometimes a little TLC goes a long way to help a child with what they're dealing with. Staff helping with book selection in libraries, those are delightful times. Class meetings that are taking place, sometimes teachers are facilitating those morning meeting times, and that really, really builds a sense of community within those, those learning environments. And then in my office, we're continuously providing mediation with kids to help with those social snappos that they encounter, and help them learn how to hear how the other one is feeling and kind of mend some of those relationships. Truly that relationship building is happening each and every day, throughout all days. And it's happening in really good ways in our district, so good things to share. That's what I have for tonight.
Any questions for Miss Run? Thanks for the report. Next report from our secondary school principal, G. Marky.
Hey, good evening, everybody. First of all, I echo the congratulations to our swimmers and divers and wrestlers for making the state tournament this last weekend. Wednesday, towards the end of the day, we're going to have a little parade of champions and a chance to send them off in the, in the Gold Gym. So that's always fun. And we've got some teams that are course continuing here. We've got the girls' basketball, that'll have their first playoff game at home here tomorrow night at seven o'clock against Detroit Lakes. So, if the public is out there looking for a fun event on a Tuesday night, one game starting at seven o'clock for a playoff game there tomorrow night, right here in the Gold Gym. And then, you know, we think we end one concert season, and it just seems like we kick in another one. This week now, we're having our middle school choir concert this Thursday evening at seven o'clock in the auditorium, followed up by next Monday, the 12th, we have a middle school orchestra concert. And followed up on the following Monday, on March 19th, we have our all-school band concert. So plenty of music opportunities out there too, for people to take in here over the course of the next couple of weeks. We are finishing up our high school registration process for next year, for students, you know, and parents indicating some course selection there. We're down to just kind of figuring out the last 10 to 15 students per grade level. Some of those are some of our students with special needs that might have some unique scheduling options available to them. When we figure out all of those, we'll get a chance to look at our totals and just see where we kind of like need to push staff in the direction for next year. So that's always curious for me to grab that here, come right around about March 1st, and start wrestling with that a little bit to see where we need to put some staff time towards for next year, and specifically. We have heard reports that our Synergy online student management software is working great again throughout this registration process. So we've even, special thanks to Sue Lewis, Rhonda, Mark, a few others down there in the tech office that keep working and improving on that program for us almost each and every day. And so they're doing a great job with that, and we, we learned some things beginning this last spring. So this is our second round, at least with registration, and it's going quite well. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up, same schedule here at the middle school and high school. One add that I would put to that is that online registration is a fantastic option, but it is going to close as of four o'clock this Wednesday, the 28th. And the reason that we're doing that, this go-around, is to have kind of no confusion between kind of that transition between doing it by paper pencil and having our staff enter those conference time slots, as compared to, we kind of ran that at the same time last fall. And so, we've got a hard cutoff of four o'clock on Wednesday. So if anybody's out there listening, please go online, take advantage of that, pick out your times and dates with which you want to schedule your conferences. And then we'll turn that system off at four o'clock on Wednesday, and do it by phone call and mail after that point. And finally, just putting a note out there, so that our juniors can anticipate out to April 3rd here, which is not that far away, is our ACT test that we'll offer to all of our juniors once again at the high school. This is a tremendous opportunity for all of those juniors to have a opportunity to take that ACT test for probably the first time for about 99% of them. And then you can always take options to take it again, if you're looking to improve your scores, but this is just a fantastic way for everybody to get a baseline ACT test out of the way. And I mentioned this before, that what school districts are finding is that this is really becoming an encouraging tool for some of those students that are right on the edge of deciding what they want to do for their senior year and beyond. And they find that if they put effort towards this test, they really score a lot better than maybe what they thought they could do. And it encourages a lot of those students to take a look at some post-secondary options early. And really, like I say, the way, the way they superscore that test nowadays, where you take it the second time, in each category, you get to take your best score. Many colleges and universities are doing that, that way now. You really have an opportunity to improve even from the first time, so.
Dean, excuse me, there is no cost to a student for the first time doing this?
Correct. Yep. If they take it here within our, within our school on that Tuesday, no cost whatsoever. So, that's what I had written down. Any questions that I could answer?
Oh, thank you very much. And superintendent Ness, did you have anything else?
Just one more thing, is tomorrow, a large group of superintendents in the area, the Lake Region Group, is going to the Capitol, will meet with MREA leaders and MASA, the school administrators, leaders tomorrow night. And then all day, 7:30 through 2:03, we're scheduled with all of the leaders, you know, so many, and then we'll get to meet with our local politicians as well. The, the key items that we'll be looking at is fixing TRA. It's not funded properly, we need to get that figured out. Certainly, the, the school safety is coming into play here, so we'll certainly have that. And then also, we're, we're looking at setting up for next year would be cross-subsidy and some different items as well.
All right, very good.
Mark.
Lori Larson.
Lori Larson. I think she thinks we have a long-term facility committee meeting.
All right. So, any questions for the superintendent on, on his, so you'll be out of the office tomorrow?
Later, tomorrow afternoon and all day Wednesday.
Okay, very good. All right. Moving on to the general consent items, we'll have included in this motion the minutes of the regular school board meeting from February 4th, 2018. And then personnel items.
Yes, a little bit of a surprise, Becky Hoag has decided to retire, and Karen Schneck as well, so we are accepting their retirements tonight. And then we have hires, Tracy Davis, the new supervisor, Mark Stevenaller, parent educator, Karina Larson, special ed parent, and then a rescinded support staff hire. And then finally, the, first of all, the Cafeteria Association desires to negotiate, so recommend approval of those items.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the general consent agenda? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on any of the items included? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. We'll move on to the business. Bling, can I surprise you and ask you to read the resolution on the retirement of Becky Hoag?
The resolution on retirement of Becky Hoag. Whereas Becky Hoag began her employment with the Ferguson Falls Public Schools in October 1991, as a Chapter 1 AOMA for three years, returning as a Chapter 1 teacher in August 1994 for one year, returning August 1996 as a gifted slash talented teacher for one year, and returning August 1998 as an elementary teacher. Whereas Becky has been a valued employee with the Ferguson Falls Public School for the past 25 years, and whereas Becky has done an excellent job as an elementary teacher in the district, and now therefore be resolved by the Ferguson Falls School Board to thank Becky Hoag for 25 years of dedicated service to the Ferguson Falls Public Schools. I'll offer a resolution and move for its adoption.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the resolution? All in favor? Oh yeah, having a roll call book? No, just go ahead.
All right. Nice, nice attempt to say that.
Well, we'll start with you, Mel Nicole.
Yes.
Mel Lynn Keen, yes. Natalie Kuzin, yes. Bling Daniels, yes. Steve Biggsaw. Melissa Ernus. Resolution passes.
Very good. All right. Natalie, will you read that next resolution?
Sure. The resolution on the retirement of Karen Schneck. Whereas Karen Schneck began her employment with the Ferguson Falls Public Schools in 1983, and whereas Karen has been a valued employee with the Ferguson Falls Public Schools for the past 33 years, and whereas Karen has done an excellent job as an elementary teacher in the district, and now therefore be it resolved by the Ferguson Falls School Board to thank Karen Schneck for her 33 years of dedicated service to the Ferguson Falls Public Schools.
All right, will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
All right, is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion? Clerk?
Melissa Ernus.
Yes.
Steve Biggsaw.
Yes.
Natalie Kuzin, yes. Mel Huntke, yes. Mel Nicole.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
All right, and we have a third resolution. This is entitled the 2018 American Indian Parent Advisory Committee Resolution. Whereas Ferguson Falls School District Number 544 has an AIPAC, which is the initials for what I just read. Composed of parents and guardians of American Indian children who are eligible for Indian education programs, American Indian language and culture teachers and paraprofessionals, American Indian teachers, American Indian counselors, American Indian adults enrolled in educational programming, and American Indian representatives from the community. Whereas the school district affords the AIPAC the necessary information and the opportunity to effectively express their views concerning all aspects of American Indian education and the educational needs of the American Indian children enrolled in the schools and programs. And whereas the AIPAC is directly involved with and advises the school board and district staff on Indian education program planning, and whereas the AIPAC develops and submits recommendations to the school board and district staff pertaining to the needs of the American Indian students. Therefore be it resolved that the AIPAC concurs that the school board and district are compliant with Minnesota statutes, Section 124D, Point 78, and that the school board and district are meeting the needs of American Indian students. Will someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
All right, is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion on the...
I can fill in. Sarah Campa is an employee for us who works with the American Indian group and is funded through dollars there. And she meets with the parent advisory group and has discussed basically things in this resolution. This was actually signed off by the parent group, and now it comes to the school board. This is an annual resolution.
How often do they meet?
I won't say that, because I don't know. At least...
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'll find out. I'll let you know.
All right. Any other questions or commentary? Clerk, will you take the roll?
Melissa Ernus.
Yes.
Natalie Kuzin.
Yes.
Steve Biggsaw.
Yes.
Mel Huntke, yes. Bling Daniels, yes. Mel Nicole.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
All right, thanks. Is someone willing to offer the motion? Is someone willing to offer the motion to enter a memorandum of agreement for student teaching between our school district and the University of Minnesota Morris?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion? We enter this agreement every year, just in case we can, so we can collaborate in case we have students that want to teach. All in favor of approving the memorandum of agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that is approved. And we have, we'll entertain a motion and then describe a little bit in more detail the long-term facilities committee report. Is there someone willing to make a motion to approve that report?
Motion to approve the report. This document ready?
Yeah. We're calling it a report.
Yeah. We can discuss it too more after we entertain the motion.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And now, back to the document and what we're accomplishing with it.
Yes, I'll just, I'll just go through this overall summary. We've met six times, and really, it's a little bit different animal from previous task force where we actually have recommendations coming out, and this is going, and I guess the only reason I hesitate on that language is because we didn't actually have the committee vote. We basically agreed, so maybe in a way they did vote, but, but this was the document that they felt comfortable bringing forward to the school board. So recommendation, report, whichever you prefer is, is fine with me. Like I said, we met six times, and what we did is we toured facilities, we looked at enrollment data, and really, what it really came down to is prior to going out for a new building about 10 years up from now, is the group felt we really need to utilize our existing to their fullest potential. And there, in two phases that would come. So the first phase is we really needed to find a home for our early childhood program, a permanent home that doesn't look like an office building. And that's exactly what the Heritage Building is right now. It was a former office building for our district office, and it has been the home for early childhood, but there's no windows, there's no playground, the ceiling, excuse me, the walls don't go to the, to the ceiling, so there's noise issues. So the, the thought is, let's make that our early childhood center. And the rationale behind it is, we don't have room in our existing facilities. That facility has great parking, it has an owner that's willing to work with us to remodel. We're able to use our lease, lease levy, so there's a number of reasons why we were able to do that. It, also, there's the availability of partnerships. It's likely that if we move out to the west side of the building, we're currently housed in the east side, the, the library is being vacated by December, maybe, I'm betting it's a little bit later than that, and Children's Corner is very interested in moving next to us and would become a partner, so it would be an early childhood center. None of that is, there's, there's lots of work to get to that point, but it, but it looks like that is a possibility. So, so that's the first half of, or one half of the Phase 1. The other part is just get Roosevelt looking more like Kennedy, the 1993, 94 edition, where the science classrooms are the media center. And we're talking about a light remodel in the sense of new carpet or VCT tile, ceiling tiles, better lighting, and pay, you know, just getting it up to speed so it's looking very nice for our students, and that would include the vocational wing as well. In Phase 2, if we, if we're running out of room in this facility, there's a couple of spots that we could possibly remodel that we would search out. The media center is a rather large area, and it already has two, three classrooms, not all are walled in, so there's a possibility of having up to five or six classrooms, and that, as an example, could house our ALC, which would free up rooms in the, the ALC currently is in the old science wing. So there's a possibility there. And then we also have a mechanical shop area that's near it. For those that are familiar with the old high school, it's the, by the art room down in the lower level, right off, right off of Fryberg, so there's a possibility of remodeling there as well. Then, the Phase 3, in the long term, in about 10 years, the bonds from this facility are going off of the tax rules, and then also our Adams and McKinley, which were built in 1937, will be in that 90-year range, and by the time you pass a bond, design, get them built, they'll probably be about 95 years old and certainly very close, if not at the end of life, very, very shortly. And whether that new elementary school would be looking at what grade levels, it could be K3, K4, could be preschool if the Heritage Building is not working out as well as we'd like, it could include preschool. So you'll know a lot more when you come closer to that time. So one thing that we would need to work with, particularly the city, I know Morehead and Alexandria work very closely with their city planners on where to locate a new elementary building. I'll use an example of Morehead. They designed where their elementary is and their middle school will go. That has really increased their enrollment, so we would like to work with the city in planning where, where this new building would go to. And again, we're looking 10 years, approximately 10 years out. So as facilitator of the, the group that included quite a few community members and school board members and administration, I would recommend that we adopt this, from, from that committee to the, to the board for their direction of the long-term plan.
All right. Are there any questions about what Superintendent Ness just reviewed, or additional comments from any of the board members? Anything you want to pull out for scrutiny?
So we're just approving that this is the plan. We're gonna try to make this work somehow.
Correct. This is the direction of the school board.
Yep.
And that might be the best, that might be the motion, is to take this document, and that will be the guiding principles or plan for the school board. The vision for the school district, yep.
Right. The long-term facility committee put a lot of effort, a lot of time and effort into all the considerations and did give us some really substantial direction in what way to proceed, and so this.
Quite a few hours you wanted to.
Yeah, right. Big thank you to.
Yeah.
Not that they took their time.
And I will send them one with a copy of this tomorrow.
That's on the grid. All right. Any other discussion on this long-term facility report? All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor of approving that, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that's approved. And a set's a first for the board. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, March 12th at 5:15 in the community room. The school board will have a work session tonight, and we'll touch more on school safety, talk about any additional facets that we want to review, and talk about our budget for the coming school year, and, and then dig in a little bit deeper for what's going on, and that's with the Heritage Building. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on adjournment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.